Or the need for affordable housing in two senses. One is that when you build a market rate housing, you take land out of development that now can't be used for affordable housing development because we only have so much land here in Silicon Valley. That's why housing is expensive. The second is that if you create more affordable housing or if you create more market rate housing, that brings in people who are going to need services and including services provided by individuals in lower paying jobs. And that therefore creates the need for affordable housing in the community. This relates to commercial linkage fees too. And so an impact fee is a fee on the production of market rate units that's linked to the contribution. So the contribution that is paid for each market rate unit is linked to the need for affordable housing that that unit has determined to create in the community. The second type of affordable housing fee in my mind is a much simpler type of fee to understand, and that is an in lieu fee. And an in lieu fee, it's exactly what the name implies. So Los Altos has an inclusionary housing ordinance that has an inclusionary housing requirement. Many cities create in lieu fees, and in fact, the city's ordinance code speaks to having the power, creates the power to establish an in lieu fee that the developer would pay instead of providing the inclusionary housing on site. That would then go into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And according to the California Supreme Court in a case called Building Industry Association versus San Jose, for those in lieu fees, you don't have to establish that nexus between the impact of the market rate unit on the need for affordable housing and the amount of the fee. The key consideration is that the developer has the choice, they can provide the housing or they can pay the fee. And so that's what makes the fee justifiable is it's in lieu of providing the housing that they're otherwise required to provide. So how do we determine amounts that are appropriate to charge using both of, for each of these different types of fees? For impact fees, if we're basing it on the need for affordable housing that's created by the market rate housing, then we have to do what's called a nexus study. And I make this sound very simple because I just say you solve for X and you need a consultant to tell you what X is. But essentially, you're trying to figure out if we build so many market rate units, how many affordable units are we going to need? What's the cost of that affordable unit? Divide that by the number of market rate units and that gives you the nexus amount, the impact fee amount. I'm oversimplifying this. You really need a consultant to do these calculations for you. They're highly complicated. But the key is that if you want to figure out an impact fee amount, you do what's called a nexus study. In lieu, I say it's much simpler and then I walk you through the steps and I make it look much more complicated because I'm actually walking you through the steps, the assignments that are staying, you get a consultant to tell you how to calculate it. For in lieu fees, you figure, you just, basically you figure out what it would cost the developer to build the housing that they're required to build under the inclusionary ordinance and you charge them a fee that is intended to equal approximately the same amount as what it would have cost them to build that affordable housing. So you figure out what it costs per unit for the developer to build the whole project and then you figure out the cost to them of building the affordable units based upon, if it's market rate, it's, you can basically subtract out the amount that they actually can charge for the unit. If it's rental, you figure out what is called the debt service that the rent would support. How much of a bank, how much in loans would a bank lend you to build that unit based upon the rents that you're actually going to take in? And you subtract that from the cost to build the unit and that is, you know, the developer's subsidy essentially to build the affordable unit. And you could just charge them that as a fee instead of having them build the housing. Even though for in lieu housing, for in lieu housing fees, you don't have to do a nexus study. Many cities do a nexus study anyways, and there's kind of one bad reason and two perhaps appropriate reasons to do that. It's a policy call whether you do that. The bad reason is that it wasn't that long ago, especially for rental housing, that under state law, cities were not allowed to have inclusionary ordinances and you can't have in lieu fees unless they're in lieu of something. So if there is no inclusionary ordinance, you can't have an in lieu fee in lieu of providing the housing. And so the only way to get fees on rental was impact fees. And so there's perhaps a common misconception out there that rental fees should be based on a nexus, have to be based on a nexus study. That's not actually true anymore in California. The other two reasons why cities might do a nexus study as part of their in lieu fee calculation, even though it's not required, one is that there's some doubt that the U.S. Supreme Court, if it ever gets to consider this issue, would reach the same conclusion that the California Supreme Court has made. And so it's just a risk calculation. And the other reason is there's some sense among, some people hold the view that if you can't link the fee to an impact, that it's not a fair fee to charge. And so they feel like you should do the nexus study in addition to figuring out the in lieu amount and charge the lower of those two numbers. That's a policy call. Okay, so regardless of whether you're doing in lieu fees or impact fees, it's common to also do a feasibility study and it's, sometimes cities, especially if they have inclusionary requirements that are over 15%, will do a feasibility study for the inclusionary requirement too, regardless of whether there's a fee. And the purpose of the feasibility study, it's a good idea for several reasons that I don't want to go into right now, but it's to determine whether or not the fee is going to prevent the developer from realizing a reasonable rate of return on their investment. And if there is, for various reasons, you might not want to charge that much. Sometimes it's appropriate just to look around at other jurisdictions and see what their fees are and see if yours are in that sort of reasonable range. Sometimes that's not a good idea and you want to go deeper and actually hire an economist to make sure that your fees are not preventing developers from achieving a reasonable rate of return on their housing, on their investments. Okay, so two different kinds of housing fees. Impact fees based on a nexus study. In lieu fees assumes you have an inclusionary requirement and the fee is in lieu of meeting the obligations under that inclusionary requirement. Different kinds of studies you can do to determine what's an appropriate fee amount. Once you have a fee set, what do you do with it? As we talked about, agencies typically set up a special fund called an Affordable Housing Trust Fund and they'll let the money accumulate into that fund and different agencies have different standards, maybe based on how long they let the money accumulate or they let it accumulate to certain amount or they let it accumulate until the wind's blowing in the right direction. But once there's enough money in that account to decide to do something with it, a common approach is to issue what's called a Notice of Funding Availability, or it's more commonly called a NOFA, which is just based on the initials. And that can be publicized in many different ways. It might be published in trade journals where you would expect affordable housing developers to notice that. It might be published in a newspaper of general circulation within the community. You might post it online. You might send it out by mail to developers who have asked for that or who you are aware of, might be interested in receiving the NOFA. Some agencies, even though it's not technically a request for proposal because it's not a procurement instrument, some agencies circulate them in the same way they circulate their requests for proposals because they kind of get treated in a similar way, even though they are different. The NOFA invites affordable housing developers to submit proposals for, you know, essentially, here's a development that I have some interest in building in your community. Here's how far along the plans for that are. Here's the potential that this will actually come to fruition, how many units, et cetera. I would like to request a grant from, a grant or a loan. Typically, it's a loan from your Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And then, you know, the agencies can take a look at those and decide whether or not they want to fund particular projects. And as I mentioned later on, in recent years, cities have lost a lot of their land use control when it comes to housing because we are in an affordable housing crisis. One thing that having an affordable housing fee does is through this NOFA process, being able to pick the projects that you think are the best projects. It does sort of bring back to the community some discretion through its spending power that it might have lost to its land use power in recent years. So when you, when the city gives money to affordable housing developers to build affordable housing projects, one question is, should the money be given as a grant, which means you don't have to pay it back, or as a loan? It's usually given as a loan by most cities and there's some very important reasons for that. One is that if it's a loan, if it's a grant, you know, you're just sort of sending the money out to the universe and there's no way to get it back. If it's a loan, there are more possibilities to recover the money if the project doesn't come to fruition. As a lender, again, you know, to the extent that the city has an interest in assuring we get quality affordable housing projects, the city has some more control over that development process as a lender than it would if it just sort of sends the money out to the universe and isn't asking for it back. And then the other thing that can happen is with a loan, as money is repaid, it goes back into your Affordable Housing Trust Fund and you sort of recycle that money. You can use it for other projects in the future. It can generate for future affordable housing projects. And then one reason why developers oftentimes prefer loans to grants is that if they accept the money as a grant, they may have to pay prevailing wage for their project. They lose that choice of whether to pay prevailing wage or not, whereas with a loan, they can make that decision based upon their funding sources and what's best for them. Oops, I went too far. So how does it work if you hand the money out as a loan rather than as a grant? Affordable housing projects, it's not like they don't produce any revenue at all for the affordable housing developer. It doesn't necessarily return a profit, but it, or, you know, not a very, only a marginal one at best, but it does create revenue because the renters are paying a large share of their income for that housing and there's some money coming in. And so a common way to structure a loan coming from a city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund is as what's called the residual receipt loan. So some years, more money is coming into the project than others based on all kinds of economic circumstances. And rather than saying you have to pay us back X amount every year or every month, you can base the amount they pay back based upon their revenue stream that's coming into the project. And that provides flexibility so you're not causing someone to default. So an example is, there's something called residual receipts, which is you take all your revenues and then you pay your expenses and there are certain partnership fees allowed and other things and whatever is left over, maybe the residual receipt lender gets to keep 50% of what's ever left over at the end of that waterfall. And typically, there is a small amount of interest charged on that just because of inflation and you do want to recycle this money into future affordable housing projects, but it's generally below market rate, sometimes considerably below. Okay, so what are the benefits of, to the developer of receiving the city's funding? I mean, obviously, the funding helps build houses in their project, but the benefits go beyond that. The primary way that we fund affordable housing in the United States, in the past, once upon a time, the primary way was the federal government gave money to states and local governments and they, through housing authorities, built housing. That's not the primary way we build housing anymore. The way we do it is mostly primarily through what are called affordable housing tax credits. And with affordable housing tax credits, an affordable nonprofit developer, could be for profit, but it's typically nonprofit, pairs up with an investor, often a bank. And the investor invests the money that the affordable housing developer needs to make their project happen. And in exchange for that, the investor receives long-term tax credit from the federal government because this isn't going to be a profitable money-making venture. And so otherwise, investors wouldn't have an interest in contributing those funds, but the tax credits make it worthwhile for them to do that. Tax credits don't provide all of the funding that an affordable housing developer needs for a project and the funding that they don't provide is called gap funding. And the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund money can be one source of gap funding, but more importantly than being a source of that gap funding, it, there's scoring criteria to qualify for tax credit. They're competitive. And there's scoring criteria to qualify for, for example, HCD sources of gap funding. And one of the things that can really move the needle on a project in terms of having enough points in the scoring method to, you know, jump to the top of the pile and qualify for tax credit is a local commitment of funds. And so it doesn't, oftentimes, it doesn't take a very big commitment of funds at all from the local government to push that project over the finish line to get the points that it needs to qualify for tax credit. And so that is-
Yeah, Eric, I want to jump in here because I think this is really an interesting point to, for you to talk about is the, you know, gap funding or bringing in other monies and how it can be a grant from a county, it can like Measure A money, it can be a waiver of certain fees, it can be all sorts of different contributions. And I think maybe you could talk about some of that because that is, I think, you know, people get very creative on trying to find this gap funding. So I hope you talk about that.
Yeah, there's all kinds of sources of gap funding. One common device I've seen that doesn't even involve cities having housing development fees. So for example, some cities have really high Mellow Roost taxes to pay for certain city facilities and services and they might be willing to, for an affordable housing development project where paying those taxes is sort of going to make the project not happen, they might be willing to sort of reduce the taxes that are owed to a loan paid off over a 55 year period at like a quarter percent interest. And that can even, depending upon the scoring criteria, be considered a source of gap funding. Waivers of fees can work in a similar way. So, but it's getting that, that local commitment, you know, oftentimes county money might be tied to having city money and HCD money might be tied to having city and/or county money. And, you know, you might need a certain amount of an HCD grant or loan to get you over the finish line to qualify for tax credit. So it sort of snowballs and that's the real, that's the real contribution of local funds. So this is kind of what I was talking about there. Tax credits come in two flavors, 9% and 4%. 9% is competitive, 4% has become competitive for a different reason. Essentially, all tax credits are now effectively competitive and that local commitment of funds in some form can help move the needle. Another way that city funds can sometimes be very helpful for developers is funding for affordable housing projects kind of comes in phases. There's three phases of the affordable housing project. The first phase is pre-development and you're planning the project and you might even still be finding a site for the project. You're getting architectural plans drawn up, entitlements, et cetera. That's the pre-development phase. And then is the development phase when you're building the project and then is, then you have final permanent closing on the project where you pay off your construction loans with all of your permanent sources of funding and that's when the project goes into operation. So you have pre-development, development, and post-development. And that pre-development phase is kind of a risky phase for a project and it's a difficult phase to get funding, but if you don't sort of have that seed money to get the project off the ground, it doesn't happen. And so it's a phase where the developer needs the money the most and it's hardest to get the money. And so some cities, they're, they're kind of more willing to make a small contribution at that phase because they know they're the only ones who might be willing to put their money on the line for it. And so there's different ways that agencies can still protect themselves to an extent and give money at that pre-development phase when nobody else wants to give them money. There's something called a collateral assignment, which gives you some security. If the developer does own the land already where they're going to build the project, you can secure the loan against the land, that simple. You can require the developer to draw down the money as they, they don't get paid until they actually incur the expenses. And maybe it's just a small grant or loan at that phase so that if the city were to lose the money, it wouldn't be the end of the world. And you also are careful in which projects you pick to work with and what developers you pick to work with. Do they have a proven track record? Are they collateralized? And by considering those things, you can, you can give money at the most important but riskiest phase and still manage your risk. So I've talked about two kinds of housing, affordable housing fees. I talked about how we determine the fee amount. I've talked about what the city does with that money. You issue the NOFA, you fund the project, grant or loan, policy, that's a policy decision. What's the benefits of the developer? And as a consideration, a way that cities can be helpful if they're willing to absorb a little bit of risk is to grant the money or loan the money at the pre-development phase. What are some of the pros and cons of that approach to affordable housing as opposed to an inclusionary housing approach, which instead of the city collecting fees to fund affordable housing developers to build affordable housing projects? And in the inclusionary approach, the city is making the market rate developers reserve a certain number of units in their project as affordable. That's the approach that Los Altos has typically taken in the past. And there are pros and cons to both approaches. I'm not suggesting that one is better than the other, but I do want to talk about what those pros and cons are. So some agencies, they don't prioritize affordable housing fees or may not have affordable housing fees because they prefer inclusionary housing policies. Inclusionary housing policies result in housing on the ground now. You're not just banking money and then building a project later. You're getting the housing now as the market rate housing is built. And inclusionary housing does result in more integrated communities. In the same project, you have people at different income groups living together in the same housing development project. That is a positive aspect of inclusionary policies. And when it comes to for sale housing as opposed to rental housing, inclusionary may be a more feasible approach, especially when we're talking about how do you provide your, meet your moderate income RENA targets. For moderate income homes, inclusionary housing is obviously more feasible than for other income categories because the developer is subsidizing it to a lesser extent. What are the pros of prioritizing fees? And when I say prioritizing fees, I mean having a fee in the first place. And then if you are encouraging developers to pay the fee instead of providing the inclusionary, you might even set the fee lower to incentivize developers to choose that option. There are benefits of that too. It may result in more affordable housing in the long run because it can serve as a source of what I keep calling seed funding for the housing. For rental housing especially, typically here in Silicon Valley, when different cities have done feasibility studies, they have found oftentimes that for rental housing, payment of fees is more feasible than providing the inclusionary, just because rental isn't, doesn't tend to be as profitable in the first place. And as I talked about through that NOFA process, you have some discretion over which projects you like the best because they, you know, they may offer higher quality options for people. As a funder, you kind of get some of the discretion back that cities have lost in California in recent years through changes in land use authority under state law. And it's sort of easier to get your lower and very low income housing through fee policies rather than through inclusionary policies. And then, as I mentioned, the money that you contribute through your Affordable Housing Trust Fund generates other sources of funding, brings other money into the community. And in particular, HCD, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, who, that's sort of a large agency that, among other things, oversees the RENA process. They administer a number of programs in the state of California that can be tapped into for that gap funding for affordable housing developers. And some of those programs offer incentives to cities too. So there's, for example, something called the IIG program that's an HCD source of gap funding. And when the affordable housing developer applies for IIG funding for their project, they co-apply with the city if the city is interested. And the developer gets a loan to, as gap funding for their housing and the city gets a grant from the state to build infrastructure. So by encouraging affordable housing developers to come in and build housing, you know, depending upon what programs the developers tap into, there could be net benefits in that way for the city too. And, sorry, I don't know what's on my screen. Okay. Perhaps the best policies are some combination of the two. Maybe one policy, maybe inclusionary isn't better than-
Wait, Eric, Eric-
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt, but it's, at least on my screen, it's like transcribing what you're saying.
Yeah, I don't know how that happened.
Oh, okay. Just so that you're aware that I, it just started happening, so.
Yeah, I probably clicked a button or-
I just, it's like when you have your headset, you know, the voice activated thing. Yeah, I just thought I'd let you know, I just, it, you're, so you're, you have a double, you have a double PowerPoint going on.
So anyway, as I was saying that, you know, maybe we shouldn't be thinking in terms of inclusionary or fees. One, a policy approach to consider is are there ways to combine those two? One agency I worked for once upon a time took an approach that worked for it, that met its goals, where they relied upon inclusionary to primarily meet their moderate income needs and fees to primarily meet their low and very low income needs. That's just one approach. And, you know, there's just so many different ways to think about affordable housing and the sky's kind of the limit in terms of how you want to prioritize things.
Eric, you were going to talk about linkage.
Yes. So I want to thank folks who wrote in about linkage fees. Commercial linkage fees are another, it's an impact fee, but it's not on housing, it's on commercial development. And that's another way to generate funding for an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Essentially, like I talked about with impact fees, if people do commercial development, they're creating jobs for the area, but they're, they're going to create jobs for people at all income levels, people at higher income levels, medium income levels, lower income levels, and everybody needs housing in the Bay Area right now. And, and so you can sort of figure out what the impact of a commercial development is on the need for housing and charge impact fee accordingly. The city has, in its ordinance code, the authority to do that, I believe, but I don't think that the city has ever taken steps to establish that fee, but that's another source of funding. It, you know, in many cities, doesn't typically generate a lot of money, but again, all of this money is really important because it can be seed money to bring in other sources of funding into the community. And except to answer your question- And except to answer your questions, that's all I really wanted to say.
Okay. Thank you so much for that very informative presentation. Does anyone have any questions for Eric or for staff? Kelly, I see you.
Yeah. Do we have any provision in what we're working on with ordinance to take an in lieu off-site fee if the, and exchange properties? Let's say the developer is going to build a project in Los Altos, but they have a piece of property in Mountain View that would take 100% affordable on the site. Is there any way that we can negotiate that they could build market rate here and they could build low income on a, a complete affordable project on another piece of property outside of Los Altos, but still in our county?
There is a provision in.
John, were you going to say?
Regulations that does provide for off-site construction of affordable housing with city council approval. But, and I'd have to go back and verify this. I think it's limited to within the city limits.
Uh huh. And I know that, like, I believe Napa County has a countywide affordable, are you thinking Napa County?
Yeah, because I'm actually working on something in Napa.
Yeah, and they have, they have worked with the county and Napa and American Canyon, and they moved the numbers around. But, and I'm not real sure how that got implemented. But it, it is something that was countywide. And the cities, the separate cities in Napa County worked on it. And I can find out more about that because I have done some work in Napa and American Canyon. And I can find out how that, that got developed.
San Francisco and South City do it, but they're a city-county, so maybe that's different.
Monterey, Monterey County, at one time, they still might have this, had an opportunity for doing that because probably in the early 1990s, Pebble Beach was doing some development in Pebble Beach Lands, and, which is part of the unincorporated county areas. And their affordable housing was built actually out in Casterville. I don't know if you know where Casterville is at, but that's where they were providing their affordable housing units.
Napa County has special legislation. They have the statutory authority to transfer RENA numbers between the cities and the counties because it's, it's sort of favorable for the, for the county to spend its money in the cities where all the services are. And then they can get credit for their RENA numbers still, even though it's not being built in their jurisdictions. And the legislature has made a special exception just for them.
Um, one more quick question then. If the city has a piece of public property that can take a mixed-use project along with affordable housing, can the city dictate more than 15% affordable units? Like, it would be retail, mixed-use retail, market rate housing and some affordable. But could that affordable component be up to like 50% of the, of the housing? Let's say it's 200 units. Could we dictate that 100 units be affordable and 100 units market rate? Do we have anything that triggers that for mixed use?
There's a statute in the government code that says that notwithstanding any other law governing the transfer of city property to a private party, including, you know, give to public funds. So in other words, you could sell the property below market value. Cities can sell property for affordable housing. And there's very strict sort of numeric limits in there. So 80% of the property has to be used for housing as opposed to the, 20% could be commercial. It has to provide a certain percentage of LI, lower income and a certain percentage of very low income housing in order to fit within that exception.
Isn't that, Eric? That's part of the new Surplus Land Act, isn't it?
Well, the legislature tried to create an exception to the Surplus Land Act. And then they amended the Surplus Land Act last year and cut the exception out. But I still think there's a way to.
Yeah, yeah.
Eric, Eric, but you and I were talking, one of the benefits of doing the NOFA, right, though, is if you're providing seed money, right? Isn't that a trigger that the city could use that money as a way to get more housing than typically you could get on the site? Is that correct?
Right. I mean, if you're acting as the lender, you can say, we want projects that are, can provide the deeper levels of affordability. We want higher quality projects. We want projects near transit. You, you can sort of establish your policies that way. And, and as a funding source, have more discretion than you, you would as a land use regulator.
Any other questions? Eric, I see your hand.
Yeah, Eric, I, this may not be just for you. Maybe John and Guido would want to jump in, or Julie. The question has to do with the interplay between what you've been describing and the density bonus law, which is our traditional way of handling this, this question. Or we do require that there be a minimum of 15% DMRs of more than a certain number of units. And this would then say, you, applying with this, we're now going to charge you a fee, which would be this scheme. Is that what happens?
Right. I mean, if you're doing an in lieu approach where you have the inclusionary requirement, but the developer can pay a fee in lieu of the inclusionary approach, then, then they're not going to provide the housing on-site. And if they're not providing it on-site, if they're not providing any affordable housing on-site, then they're not going to qualify for density bonus in that case scenario. Maybe they provide some and qualify for some level of a density bonus and pay fees for parts. But yes, right now, because every project has to provide the inclusionary units, then every project can also claim the density bonus. But the developers don't want to provide the inclusionary. If they prefer to pay the fee, then they're also not going to get to take advantage of the density bonus.
Because we've, we've seen situations where, you know, a developer will include one very low income unit because it gives a large density bonus, not because they're looking forward to selling a very low income unit. Because they're all for sale. We don't have rentals in Los Altos. So the problem always has been, you know, along with Shelley's notion of having retail on the, on the ground floor, which we just can't get anybody to do for love or money, you know. But this might be an alternative to that where we could get something and get smaller footprint buildings that are still economical, right? Which has been one of the issues in, in Los Altos, right? Because what we end up doing is, is encouraging everybody to put a fourth and fifth floor on top of a building that can make plenty of money at three, you know, and then have some, some money for whatever purpose we would be able to spend this on. It's similar to the Quimby Act fees, which are earmarked for, for recreation and parks. But, you know, it'd be a similar kind of a situation.
It's very similar. That's right.
Yeah.
It's, both are in lieu fees.
Yeah, yeah. Now, is it, is it possible, because the Quimby Act fees are tied to the market value of the land. Is it possible to have, since, since there doesn't have to be any nexus, something could be, as you say, the sky is the limit. Although that's not what you were talking about specifically. Is there some way to, to have a significant fee?
You can, so for, for rental housing, first of all, the way you would, the way you would figure out the fee is, is let's take a hypothetical project with 100 units in it. And let's say that we have a 15% inclusionary requirement. So start with, start with the cost to build the project and then break it down to a per-unit number. And then what, what is the cost to build those 15 units? You're going to subtract to that, subtract from that the fact that there's still going to be some revenue to the developer. And the way you account for that is you figure out what debt service the affordable unit would support. In other words, if, if the rent is $1,700 per month, how much money will the bank be willing to loan to build that unit? It's not going to be the full cost to build the unit, but it will be some amount. You're going to subtract that from the cost to build the unit. And, and the amount that you have left is the developer subsidy, what the developer is paying out of their own pocket to build that unit. That can be charged then as a fee. You can't charge more than that amount because then you're charging them more than a lieu fee that's not really in lieu anymore. It's, it's, you're asking for more money from them than it would cost them to build the unit. It's common to charge less than that amount if you want to encourage the developers to pay the fee, if you want to build up that Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Those are all policy choices that, that planning commission and ultimately city council will have to make. Does that answer your question?
But Eric, the other thing is, is that the park in lieu fee doesn't have the complicated financing. It's just a true in lieu. You, you need to, you either pay the perk fee or you pay the in lieu fee. And it, it doesn't have the complicated financing. So it, it's based on land for land, property for property, property assessment. So it, they're not really apples and apples. It's kind of apples and oranges. You know, the perk fee is really easy to calculate. We do a calculation based on the fair market value of, you know, a, a residential site or, you know, a, you know, land as valued in Los Altos at the time we set the fee. But that's not how the in lieu fees for affordable housing are calculated. I think, I hope that helps Eric's, the other, Eric with the Cs question versus the other Eric, yeah.
Yeah. No, because, because, yeah, it is a complicated process. And as you say, it effectively, you have to hire somebody to figure out what that number is.
Right.
You know, otherwise you would have a, a simple sort of, you know, or tying it to some kind of percentage. I mean, you know, the, say a 15%, right? And you, you can work from that in some circumstances. It becomes an arithmetic question. But you would have to have some other term like, you know, it, you know, some amount that would represent the, as you would call it, the developer's contribution. And you would just have to have a number that represents that in general. And that might be revised every few years or something. You would have some, you know, basically a, you know, some, some number. And then it, it also has the advantage of being objective, the magic word these days. You know, because everybody would know what it would be. But that would be a fixed cost that would be. And if it increases the price of a million dollar unit by $10,000 or $15,000, nobody's going to notice. But it would, you know, contribute a fair bit of money to, to a fund that would be useful. So that, that could be a very interesting alternative to the density bonus. My favorite law, I don't want to see it go away, but on the other hand, you know. But, you know, I mean, that's, that's something to think about from a policy perspective. It could be a lot easier, much more objective and ultimately make it easier to control some aspects of development that have proved to be unpopular. So.
Okay. So any other?
Yeah, I have a question. What, what is our obligation in terms of timing to come up with a fee amount? And what's Los Altos' strategy? I remember we've talked about this a while ago. And so is there an urgency? Is there a pressure that we, that we need to come up with a fee?
No, there hasn't been any direction right now or there's no urgency. I know there's been some questions about the linkage fee because we've got the ordinance, but we don't have the fee established. And I'll defer to John Biggs. This is just more of the background so everybody understands more about affordable housing and RENA and, you know, it, all these issues come into play when you, when you're really going to study affordable housing issues and impacts. So John, I don't believe there's any, we haven't gotten any, there is, we don't have an ask, I would say, at this point. But we're just giving this as a background.
Well, did have it on their list of things to accomplish was, which was to go out and have established a, the actual fee for the linkage fees. We just never got an opportunity to do that because of a number of reasons that you're aware of. But that is on our sort of short-term list of things to start looking into pretty closely. I think we're going to want to make sure that that's in place as we move through the date to the housing element. Just so HCD is aware of other efforts that we are, efforts that the city is taking in order to kind of expand the opportunities for providing affordable housing. So I would say within the next six months to a year, we would, we would start looking into that pretty seriously.
You have another question?
I was, I was curious. So what do you, how long is the timeline, you think, to, to hire? I mean, hiring a consultant, having them do their work? How long does that typically take?
Um, the consultant work, I don't think is going to take very long. They're going to have a formula that they use to support the fee. And it's going to be going out and getting some current data to plug into their calculations to come up with what they recommend. I, I think the more challenging thing is going to be, as Eric said, what's going to be the policy? Do you want to make the fee low enough so that you encourage more people to pay into the, pay, pay those, those fees and build up a housing fund? Or you, is a policy, one going to, going to be one where it's, it's more appropriate and better for the community overall, affordable units built through the projects that come forward. And that's what we've been experiencing since at least 2016, since I've been here. Every, every project coming forward, every multifamily residential project is taking advantage of our density bonus regulations. They're providing the inclusionary units. And as Commissioner Stanley mentioned, they, they add one or two very low income units and they get a, a density bonus. So they're, they're sort of, in, in return for the city getting the affordable units, they're reducing that delta between what it would cost them to just pay the fee and what they, they would get in return for that, so.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay. So I will now open it up for public comment. Oh, sorry. Julie, did you have a comment?
No, I was just going to do a friendly reminder to open it to public comment.
Okay. Perfect. So I'll open it up now. I see a few hands that are raised.
I'll, I'll go ahead and unmute people. Chair Ahhi.
Okay.
Roberta, you have three minutes.
Oh, hello, how are you? So my question is, is that how does this really relate to the RENA numbers? In other words, if we had an impact fee or an in lieu fee, would that reduce our RENA numbers? That's question number one. And question number two, what is the timeframe? In other words, if we put the fees in, oh, one way or the other, whatever you decided, does it take then a year or two years or three years or four years to accomplish getting something built? Because RENA sort of wants it built now. So how does it, I guess, that's the question is, how does it relate to the RENA numbers in those aspects? Thank you. If you could, anyone, John Bays or Eric, if you could tell me, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. And I can unmute Sue Russell.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I, I thought a lot of the presentation was very clear, but I felt at the end that there's still kind of a lack, there's some confusion about impact fees versus in lieu fees. A lot of the presentation was related to residential impact fees. And my understanding is that these were generally only used when the Palmer case was in effect. Now it's the commercial impact fees are important. So what we, what legal woman voters recommends is that we move expeditiously to get the consultant hired. Every day lost on collecting these fees is less money that the city will have. We recommend that the fee schedule be studied by the consultant and adopted as provided by the 2018 ordinance. We would suggest that the consultant could look at single-family net new additions. In other words, scrapers where someone's been building a mansion instead of a small house. This would relate to the residential impact fees that Eric discussed in his presentation. And it was also referenced in the last Keeser-Marston analysis. We also would, would, so we think there's two aspects to this that are very distinct. One is. One is looking at the impact fees, which we understand need to be relooked at. Um, but we would agree with John Biggs, it could probably be done very quickly because these consultants have done them in many cities recently, including San Jose. And all the cities around us have this type of fees. The second issue is really the inclusionary ordinance. And I would like to say that I think our inclusionary ordinance works quite well, um, right now. And that it provides very well when there is rental housing built. Um, I think that there could be direction on whether we prefer the units or we prefer the fees. Um, from our perspective, we think that, um, especially in the case of rental units, where in Los Altos, those are targeted to lower income households. That works very well to have the inclusionary ordinance, um, rather than the fees. And if you want to encourage the, the, um, the units to be produced, then you make sure that the alternative mitigation is more onerous to the developer, rather than less onerous. Which was the, the way Eric seemed to be, to, um, to be coming at that. So, um, we, we would, that would not take a new study, as I think was said, you just have to give direction to the council. That you want to have the inclusionary ordinance expanded, in our opinion, to include more alternative mitigation, rather than just the in lieu fees, which is all that is specified in that particular ordinance right now. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions, if there were any, about the letter that we sent.
Great, thank you so much, Sue.
Yeah, unmute, uh, Salim.
Hi, um, I thought that was a great presentation from the deputy city attorney. I, I found it extremely helpful. Um, and I agree with everything that Susan Russell said, and also I agree with the letter that, uh, the Los Altos Alliance for Affordable Housing sent in. I don't have much to add besides that. I, I hope you take those, uh, pieces of feedback into account. Thank you.
Okay, and, uh, Roberta, Claire, let me see if Claire wants to. Claire, did you want to speak on this item? Claire, are you there?
I did, yes.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, um, just, uh, providing some feedback. I also agree, um, with the, uh, League of Women Voters. Um, and also the feedback that was the same as Salim, the feedback that was sent in. I think it's important, um, though, I, I know this is just a great presentation, um, also wanted to say, but I think it's important. Uh, I know that I understand this is educational, um, but if it does come to the city council, I think it's important to get, uh, feedback, uh, from the community about in lieu fees. Um, one of the things, one of the con, the pros in the presentation was that, you know, it's, it's, uh, affordable housing now versus later. And I think that's, um, uh, an important thing to, um, an important pro to the, to, to this. So, um, that's pretty much all that I had to say. Um, and it was a great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have Sue Terry. I don't, Terry, let me just verify that, Terry. Terry, this is. Terry there, did you want to speak on the side of Terry?
Just observing.
Okay, okay, there you go. Uh, Chair Ahhi, I believe that is everybody from the public.
Okay, great, thank you, Guida. Um, so I'll close public comment and we can open it up for discussion. Would anyone like to go first? This is always the tough part. Um. Anyone, anyone? Eric, would you like to go first?
In, in a sense, I started with my question. I think this is very interesting because it gives us an alternative to the, the rather crude instrument that is the density bonus law. And, and that is relatively easily, um, taken advantage of in some ways. I, I, I'm wondering, we, we, we're talking about rental versus for sale units. How much rental housing is there in Los Altos? My impression is it's very small. There, there may be individual owners of condos that rent their homes out, that's one thing. But where their actual apartment houses? How many, I mean, are we talking about a significant market here? Or is that just something that has happened? Because that can make a difference. That's number one. And that, 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 this is something we will need to consider down the line when this comes up, but I, I want to put that out there. And secondly, having to do with the commercial impact fees. Again, how many office buildings are going up in, in Los Altos? What, what is, what, what's going to produce these fees? The things right now that are being developed that produce fees are condo units. They're residential. They're far more residential than we'd like them to be. They don't include, they're not mixed use. We cannot for love or money get a developer to build a mixed use development in the city. But that's what we would like to have. And so, you know, Shelley, you're absolutely right. If we get anybody to do it, it'd be great. Uh, but we can't get anybody to do it. So, so the source of these funds, however you characterize them, whatever you do, are housing development units. And they are for sale housing development units. That's Los Altos. And, you know, so, so we can discuss till the cows come home, some of these other aspects, but I think that it ignores the reality. Or how do we affect the reality? Can we do something to make it more attractive to a developer to build rental units? And this is part of the policy decision is how do we, how do we do this? Ultimately, this fund is supposed to help a developer of for sale units, I'm sorry, of, of affordable units. Make some money building these in Los Altos where land is very expensive, et cetera. Okay, but you have to have the money in the fund before you can do that. And so that means saying yes to a lot of units where the, the developer is willing to pay the in lieu fee. You build up the, the fund and then you've got something you can hand out. So you're going to continue doing what we're doing. The pattern continues, only instead of having a density bonus, we have a fee. Okay, which is perhaps a better way to go. That's another question. But, you know, those are the things that we have to deal with. I, I, I. Again, you know, I, with all due respect to the League of Women Voters and Sue, I, I, I just don't see the, 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 maybe I'm missing something. And if I am, please tell me, but I do not see the possibilities of doing these things in any significant way, given the realities of development in Los Altos right now. So that, that's, those are questions I have. They're things we're going to have to talk about. I, I'm, I'm all in favor of doing whatever we can to, to, to encourage affordable housing. But the reality is that some of these things just aren't available in the few square miles that constitute Los Altos. We don't have a lot of land to develop. What land we do have is very expensive. And we have not seen a project, last time we saw a project that was involved, any rentals, an agreement rental was in 2018. And it isn't being built because the developer can't get the money from the bank to do it, because he agreed to put six rental units in the development. At least that's what he told the city council last year. You know, tho- those are problems. So, you know, we don't want to create a rule that's going to stop everything, or that's going to make it difficult, or that isn't, isn't going to have any application. So those, those are things that I think we, we, we need to think about as we, as we go forward with this. I don't have any answers to those, but it would be nice to have some data to talk about, you know? Because again, I could be completely wrong in my impression of these things. But that's because I don't know any better than what I know. So if there, if there are data, we should have those, so we can talk about this in an intelligent fashion.
You know, um, Julie or Eric, I, I work on a lot of these projects in a lot of cities where you look at reimagining existing lands in cities like Los Altos. And we talked about Napa as an example. There is a lot of data out there that, I mean, if we ever did a Los Altos 2040 plan. And we looked at the reimagination of some of our city owned land. We could create these places and spaces that would actually fit into this inclusionary housing mixed use plan. But we're, we're not there yet. You know, we're just not there yet, but they do exist and we're seeing these smaller towns like Santa Rosa and Sonoma and, you know, San Francisco, South City. Reimagine these spaces that have been the same since the 40s. And that changes the nature of the town. And again, we're not ready for that, but there, there is data on that. That probably we should provide and someday when we look at a 2030 or a 2040 plan, we should really look at that.
Well, Shelley, to follow up, since we learned last week that there are 58 properties in the city that the city owns, something like that. Maybe if we knew what those were, um, we could find out whether there's anything that, that offers that kind of possibility.
Absolutely.
We're going to have to do that to, since we now have to, 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 to the next housing element. We have to say, not only is this land that isn't occupied, but it's land that isn't occupied, upon which we might be able to build in the next eight years. I think we're going to have to do that anyway as part of that process. But that's one, this is the kind of thing I'm talking about. We can test the, the hypotheses against the real data. Is there city owned land sufficient to build these kinds of things on? I, I would hope so, but that's the question, right? So, um, it would help to know some of these things, because then we could talk with something that's sort of like intelligence.
Yeah.
Don, I also think it'd be useful to, uh, I'm, I feel like that the information is available. How many apartments and rentals do we have in the city?
Right.
We do have, um, uh, population of renters. I mean, I, I, um, I feel like we've, we, we, we've talked about this and we've talked about putting in, in place the amount of the in lieu fees. And it's really like a philosophical discussion that we have to have, of what are we, what we're trying to accomplish? Are we trying to really make the fees high? So it, uh, disincentivizes, um. Property, uh, developers to buy their way out of it. If, um. If we think that the, the, uh, it is so long term, the ability to actually utilize those funds? Or do we want to start building up that pool so that when the time does come, and it will come, we have, uh, something growing that we can utilize? And so I, I, I don't see the density, like, I don't see any way to, to manipulate these fees to affect the utilization of the density bonus laws. Those are such a desirable, they, the, what, what you can gain from those is so, um, much better than anything a town is willing to allow a developer to do. That, like, there's no question they will continue to be utilized. The carrot is too big for someone to put that away. So, um, the question is, do we then want to make these fees like a stick? Where are you really, you know? Uh, uh, aren't, aren't, you're encouraging anyone to use it? And I, I'd be interested in hearing, and I, I don't have a position on that quite yet, because I, I do like, um, Shelley's, uh. Concept of like thinking about what does the future hold and how do we prepare for that? Because for sure, we're not, if we have nothing built up, there will be nothing in the future. And so even if we can't imagine it now, creating that nest egg and letting it grow will benefit us in the future, in the future. As long as it doesn't become too easy of an out, which I don't think it will, because I do think the density bonus laws will continue to be really advantageous. And there is another source of funds that we talked about. And that Sue, um, raised is that, that, I, I think she raised it in, in the letter, I can't recall her, uh, tonight, but, um. Of having fees to residential, um, improvements, not the whole project, but like, um, and this came up in a prior meeting, the sort of net addition of your, um, remodel. And, you know, what's good about that, it's like then everyone is invested in contributing to affordable housing. Not just commercial developers, but also our residents. And so like, we're all in it together. I'm glad we're having this discussion. I would like to see us like move forward with some objective and direction. Though I'm not exactly sure what it should be.
Well, I would just say that, um, right now, there, um, this, this is going to, I believe this presentation at some point is going to go to the council. And then we'll get more, we'll get further direction on it. Because we're just, this is just part of this whole housing law, housing element. You know, because in lieu fees really does play into housing element and what are we doing with our housing element? What are we doing to satisfy our numbers, our Rena numbers? Um, I don't know, John Biggs, do, uh, I just think this is like receive this information and, and then we will be bringing it back. This was more just as a high level education. So, um, the planning commissioners, when the housing element comes to you in the future, you have, you have a better background, a better education of what all. All these, as I say, the, all these pieces to the puzzle, what they all mean. And as you can see, housing law and housing law financing and housing law fees, it's, it's all very complicated. And in the next six months, we will be going through an updated housing element. And it's just more of, um, background. So when you look at the things coming forward, you have a more complete background.
Well, well said, Julie. But the other thing that we did offer up, um, during the presentation was that if there is additional information, uh, you would like, that could help, you know. A discussion amongst you as commissioners, we can certainly bring that forward. And I heard, heard a couple of requests for information, one, you know, the number of rental units that we have here in Los Altos. And how many, how much property and where is the property that the city owns? I mean, that would certainly link to the efforts we're all going to be undertaking as we move forward in updating the housing element. So we, we can bring this back and continue our, more of a dialogue, maybe even, um, put it under the, the term of, you know, discussions related to the, the preparation of the housing element.
Yeah, okay. Um, any other commissioners want to give a comment?
All right, I just want to, uh, it's a fascinating, uh, presentation and, uh, discussion. And I read the report that building blocks that were sent to us a couple of times. I'm just wondering, and I've wondered this for a long time, if the in lieu fees that developers pay. Is adequate. Or if we're to provide whatever we want, whatever our goal is. Or if we're actually better to have a unit now, we, we, the developer on distal, not distal, on the most recent development we have. Approved, he's gonna, we're gonna get one new rental, we're gonna get one new unit, market, a, a unit to available housing from, for low income. We act, so we actually have one. It's a bird in the hand worth throwing in the bush, because those in loose fees are going to come down the pike. Some, the monies will eventually grow and at some time we'll have the money. But that time, in all likelihood, the expenses and everything else is going to cost more money. So the money we're going to have is not going to be adequate to do much then. So I'm sort of in favor of the, the inclusionary zoning and is, my thought process is the. 15% adequate? And then I think Eric mentioned that there's a developer that. Was going to build 100 units and couldn't get bank financing because six units for low income. That sounds pretty narrow. But I don't have any information on that. But I, I, I don't know what the answer is. It's, it's just, it'd be a great discussion with, with the data. Maybe John's going to give us, give us an opportunity to really analyze this more, in more depth. And, um, and see what we can learn from it. So. Thank you.
I have one comment, um, kind of following up, up on what Renee said in terms of additional information. And also, if we were to do something with residential improvements, you know, on some incremental value. John, is that a number we could see that that number would be? What is the annual value of incremental improvements here? Or is that too hard to get to? Because you're just looking at the increment, not the total cost of the, of the project.
I think it would be easier to get the, um. The actual increment in square footage than the value, uh, because, because a value is typically developed through the building process.
Right.
And it's a bad value for the construction of work and it doesn't provide, uh, existing value versus future value. But we do know through the, the plans that we get, what the existing square footage of a house is and what the new square footage of the house is. And I think based on that comparison, we could, could develop some fee as long as it's in line with legal requirements.
Yeah, the reason it's interesting to me is, one, the whole idea we're in this together to try to solve our affordable housing issue. But if we're really trying to get it to a substantive number, I wonder if that's the best way to get there. Without being. Without being striking a balance.
There's a lot of single-family residential development that goes on in Los Altos.
So I'd be curious if that's a number we can get to.
Okay, thank you. David, did you have any comments?
No, I thought it was a really good, helpful presentation. It gave me a lot to think about, but I agree with some of the other comments that it's raises different philosophical questions. I don't think at the moment I'm prepared to say I did really appreciate the presentation, so thank you.
Yeah, I had a couple notes. I think that even the public comments we received, I thought were really helpful. Background. In terms of the, there was a discussion about in 2018 about the specific fees. I think that, you know, the fees could be looked at and updated. I don't think it's a bad idea to do that. You know, even just to see if we're kind of in line with other jurisdictions. And then as far as the discussion about inclusionary housing and impact fees, in lieu fees, I personally, personally believe that we should always have our options open. So you know, I think that there was one comment that kind of was saying, we need housing now and not money. You know, but I think things are changing and evolving so quickly that, you know, we might realize that we kind of want to have all of our options open. And I think that it's kind of a, it's not a one-size-fits-all thing. At least I believe so, because, you know, every project is different. Every, you know, the financial situation for every developer is different. So I think we have to kind of be open. I think alternative mitigation strategies make a lot of sense. I think, you know, Eric outlined a lot more kind of possibilities than I was even aware of. So you know, I think that we should really look into that and maybe even amend that portion of, I forget what chap, I think chapter 14, that kind of opens up these options. But with that said, I don't know if I'd want it to be a situation where, you know, the council is deciding for every project, what direction to take. So I think that, you know, whatever we decide to do, there should be a clear threshold that, you know, would be implemented. Whether it's the size of the project or how many units are in the project. I think Eric had mentioned, you know, if there's a certain amount of low or very low units, that might trigger that option. You know, I'm hesitant to decide something though, because I think council will probably have their own thoughts on that. So yeah, those were kind of just my thoughts. But I definitely think looking at the fees, making sure they're up to date. And looking at alternative mitigation strategies, I think is definitely a good option for us moving forward. So those are my thoughts. Okay, any other thoughts from anyone? Or comments from staff, questions, anyone? Okay. So, yeah, John, is this just kind of a, not a recommendation, but just kind of a discussion?
Correct.
Okay.
The training exercise. And, you know, we've heard a few questions, and I think what we will plan on doing is rescheduling another discussion for this topic with the commission.
Okay, great. All right, so that agenda item is done. Next up, commission reports and comments. So I think that's me, actually. I attended the council meeting on March 9th, where they discussed the boarding house ordinance. The council ended up moving forward with our recommendation, which was great, to allow boarding houses. They made some modifications and edits and changes, but I think overall, the tone and intention that we had, I think, is still there. And then I just wanted to also mention, I attended the study session for the objective criteria. They, the council had a lot of questions and comments about that, but I think staff and the consultants did a really good job of responding to everything. So I think it's ready to go to council for a formal hearing, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, what we're going to do is Guido and I are going to be meeting with the consultants and going over that list of questions and comments and suggestions that the council members had. Respond to all of those, make some adjustments to the document, and then bring that back to the city council. Provide them both with a redline version so they can see where the modifications were made and then a clean version that hopefully they'll be able to introduce and pass into law.
That's great. Yeah, good news. So I think that was it. That was all that I had for the report.
I just, I just wanted to mention that we distributed the list of the city council meeting assignments to all the planning commissioners. I think everyone got a copy of that. If you didn't, let us know. We'll get another copy out to you. It's, it's just the list on a rotating basis, a planning commission member will attend a city council meeting just to observe what happens in the meeting and then report back to the commission at their next meeting or following.
Great. Okay, potential future items?
So looking at the horizon, we have a city council meeting on the 23rd, that's next Tuesday. 461 to Orange. This probably predates some of you on the commission, but it was a a use permit for a language school within an existing church facility. They needed to do some updates to their traffic studies. It's taken a while for it to get scheduled for the council, but the council is taking up that use permit next Tuesday. The planning commission did recommend approval of that. We can get back to you with some information on what took place. Guido's prepared the housing element annual progress report. This is the report that we provide to housing and community development at the state level on our progress towards the current Rina cycle. So that's something that's on the council agenda for them to consider. Your next meeting is slated for April the 1st, and we don't have anything yet. That's not an April 1st joke. It's, we honestly don't have anything yet for you. But if we do, we will let you know. That then takes us to the city council meeting on the 13th. The flag lot that you looked at, a conditional use permit for at 1074 Riverside Drive will be considered by the city council that evening. Along with the, we're planning on the public land preservation ordinance, and you took that up, I think, at your last meeting. So that's slated. The city attorney and I have some work to do on the agenda report that goes to council, but we're hoping to make that on that agenda. And then I'll wrap up your second meeting in April, which is on the 15th. You have the study session regarding a project at 42428 San Antonio Road. That's where the Pancake House is located. This is an SP 330 project, excuse me. And it's 23 units with 2,600 square feet of commercial space on the first level. So it's a mixed-use project, and you'll be giving the developers some thoughts and feedback on that project. And that kind of wraps up the horizon for us.
Great. We finally got a mixed use, Eric.
Yeah. Just not on El Camino.
All right. If there's nothing else from anyone, it's 8:40.
Got questions?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Well, John, Big, Big provided us with some information on the San Antonio Road project, other than what you sent out a couple of months ago. At least on the address and what's proposed. Do we have any idea?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the first part of the question again?
On the San Antonio Road, the 426 the Pancake House. I like blueberry pancakes, please. Is there any additional information we have on that project, other than some commercial on ground floor?
I don't think the agenda report is wrapped up yet, but we can take a quick look and see if we can get the commission a few more details on the project.
Okay. Second question I have is, do the commissioners ever get together and look at the projects they have previously approved and see if they look what you would have done differently? If what you thought you were getting is not what you got, what would you do to make the project better for the city? Without avoiding, you know, the commissioners would meet it. Those involved that wanted to could meet at the project and discuss it. Just amongst themselves, is that possible? Is that done?
That is done. In fact, Commissioner Bodnar probably remembers, the last time we did this was probably three years ago. And we had quite a bevy of projects that the commissioners reviewed at a meeting. In other cities, I've actually just borrowed a van and taken the commissioners out from site to site as a group to look at some of the projects. It's collectively, you know, kind of a good idea to go out and, you know, hear everyone's comments in the field. We we noticed it as, I think that would be something to do in the future, once we're through the pandemic. There's only one real project, though, that I can think of that's been completed. There might be a few other smaller ones, but it was the 488 El Camino Real project that has gotten to the point where it's finished and, you know, in a state where you can go out and take a really close look at it. The other projects have not really broken ground yet. There's the one on Miramani Avenue. But it's progressing really, really slowly. And in five years, it's still basically a shell and and not a complete shell right now.
I've seen working on it. Occasionally, you see the couple of trucks in the gates open. And I thought maybe for a while, one time I thought I'd gone into bankruptcy here. There was finance, I don't know that there was or wasn't. Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
It's a good idea. We, I enjoyed it. You know, we had a bunch of projects that had gone through. So we, someone, I can't remember who affectionately called it four of the good, the bad, and the ugly. And so what we approved. And, you know, those that came out as expected, those that came out better than expected, and those that did not come out as well as we had hoped. And then what could we learn from that? For next time? So, yeah, I mean, in the last three years, it wouldn't have been, you know, this body, I would have approved it, but I, I go as projects on first and it'd be interesting to see where when, when they are complete to do that.
Even if we, if we, the existing commissioners hadn't approved it, we could look at what's been constructed and say, that's good.
We had the plans, you know, that we, that came before us, and then we could see the building. And you see the difference.
Well, I'd be interested in doing that with anybody when we can.
Yeah. Okay, great. All right. If there's nothing else, it's 8:44, meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.